Okay. Now I take that one down because it wouldn't keep on.
Oh, okay.
It wouldn't keep that.
Anyway, okay, we're gonna call a sterling sterling planning zoning meeting to order. Yeah, it's Monday, August 18th, and Scott with the pledge of allegiance. Welcome to the U.S. Senate, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all. So we'll be seating Peter for John.
Uh, sitting in the room.
Yes.
Yeah.
Help you some stuff. Okay, any comments from our audience, our one audience person?
Audience?
She's asleep.
Oh, we're very sad about your loss.
Okay.
That's all.
We'll talk about it. Okay, approval of meeting minutes from July 20. Is anybody, any changes to it? Is everything okay? I had no comments. Okay, anyone else? It was pretty long. So we need a motion to accept. I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from July 31st as written. Okay? Second? Okay, better. Okay, so we go to correspondence. So, any correspondence for us? Just a little one.
There was that one.
Is that the only one? Okay, so, yeah, I resigned effective September 1st. Um, there's, I'm not sick, I'm not leaving town or anything like that. I've been on there 15 years and it's sort of at a point where I'm losing some momentum and I don't wanna say interest, but um, just losing it a little bit. It's been that way for about four months now and I'm like, ah, I'll just wait it out. Maybe it's just something I'm going through and it didn't change. So I felt it best for the board, for the town, that I stepped down and I just moved on. I also resigned from economic development, same thing. That one I've probably been on 17 years, this one about 15 years. So it's been a long haul and it's been good. I've learned a lot about zoning. I've met a lot of great people in the town. A lot of the town employees I get to know, got to meet a whole lot of them, get to know them. So it's been really good and it's great. And I, I don't feel too bad because this is probably one of the better commissions up in group that, if on the zoning board in the last 15 years. So you guys are really on the ball and doing a great job and that, that's really important and you're representing the town, which is important. You've got a great reporting secretary. She's one of the better ones we've had. Don't say that, okay? Because they come out like within two days of the meeting or even a day and, you know, they're usually pretty accurate. So that's really good. You've got a good town planner now, uh, which is really, really helpful. And you also have the support of the select though, which is, is really good. So you're, you're in good shape. Well, thank you for your service, Ross. Really appreciate it. I, I enjoyed your leadership and thanks. It's helped me greatly. So, good. Very much appreciate it. Many, many years. All right, so we'll move, move on a little. This is no unfinished business. New business, you know, new business, new business. So look at the CEO report somewhere in there. There's a lot of inquiries, I guess, about trailers, campers and.
And there's still a question here regarding zoning regulations related to accessory dwelling units from, from citizens and applicants.
Yeah.
And I, I looked through that. I looked through those regulations and there was one item that seemed unclear to me and that was for a two-family, it requires an additional two acres or a total of four acres. Accessory dwelling unit doesn't really address it at all. So maybe there's some text amendment that we should do at some point in the future to make that more clear. I'm, I'm not sure if that's what the inquiry was. I think maybe we should have a discussion probably around this and see what that was. So I think moving forward, maybe I'll, uh, ask, you know, John, what the specific, uh, question was and then if it's related to that two acres versus four acres rule. Uh, maybe we should address that with a text amendment and might read it.
Right, because you do have, I think, some of the text amendment that we have proposed addresses some of the accessory dwelling, cleans up some of that.
Yeah.
That's just kind of sitting there. So it would be something you would need to add.
Yeah, I think.
Um, add in there for clarification purposes. Cause I know it can be confusing even with, cause I know in our, in our own office, we have, um, we have other staff that does, does not deal with zoning all that often. Um, and they're doing some administrative work for some of our other towns and we have to kind of explain, well, cause that was one of their questions, what's really the difference between a duplex and an accessory dwelling?
It's a valid question, yeah.
The point is the accessory dwelling is subordinate to the actual, if it's a two-family, then they're more or less equal. Um, if it's an accessory dwelling, then the accessory dwelling is subordinate to usually a single-family dwelling.
And it's for the purchase requirements and, you know, bedroom requirements that make it different.
Right, so there's not.
There's those items.
Correct. So it's usually, so it's not, it's something where a lot of people have, um, had questions, don't really understand the, um, or may not understand the difference. So there's, um, the, the better you can explain it, the easier it is for the public, but also, um, unfortunately, I don't know if you'll ever explain it enough, but, um, but we can definitely look at it.
Which is why we are as a staff that has office hours that people can call or stop by and ask those questions and get clarification.
But I know, I mean, this month I didn't get anything from, um, John in regards, looking for any clarification on anything in particular, but.
Okay, yes. That was one more time. CEO report.
Okay, moving on. Audience comments, one more time. No? Okay, okay. Uh, so we'll move on, other business subdivision regulations section eight, open space.
So in those regards, what I've done, one of the bar discussions at the last meeting was we talked a little bit about, and I didn't put it into, I know you guys have a running documents, but I kept it out of the running document only because I didn't want to put things that were optional in there until they were decided on. So this one kind of covers a little bit of both things that we're talking about tonight, the open space and the, um, other. And we talked a little bit about, um, method of disposition, how, um, open space was going to be, um, determined, whether it was gonna be through conservation easement and that type of thing. And I know, uh, we talked, talked some about utilizing language or adding some language in to the regulation saying whether it would be through like, because you had nothing currently. So whether it could be done through a conservation easement, just through be simple, through the homeowner association, that type of thing. So all I did here was in this first two top paragraphs are just examples of two different methods by two different towns that more or less kind of say the same thing. Um, the top one just basically spells out individually, um, different options of, um, how the open space could be preserved, whether it be perpetually by the town, state, or land trust, um, dedication to a homeowner association, um, utilization of an easement with or without public access. Utilization of a recreation easement to the town, state, or private, non-private. Um, the top one is a little more specific, whereas the bottom is just like an easement or fee interest, which is basically the same thing, not the same thing, but describes the same as the top, but it's just more in a, uh, a brief paragraph and kind of leaves it a little more open to, um, the commission having, kind of describing it when you go and make the approval, I guess, or have giving, I guess it would give the commission more leeway, leeway, I guess, when you do the approval on how it's described. It still has the same types of, um, whether it be a conservation easement or, um, transfer of fee ownership or fee interest. So it still has the same types, land trust, town, state. It's just two different ways of saying the same thing.
Given any of these scenarios, is the, is the property removed from the, from the deed of the developer or the property owner? And all of these, I mean, in number seven, private ownership with appropriate taking of development rights. So that's, that's clearly still beed into the property owner. Right, it's still included in that, that parcel.
Right, there are, there are situations where it is removed from the developer, like if developer is basically saying that I am beading this to, he could beed it to the town.
Right.
He could beed it to a land trust. And that would be where the fee simple rights are going to somebody else. Um, where they're actually just gonna carve it off as if it's another portion of the subdivision. It's not considered a lot because it's not a buildable lot, because they're not building on it. But it's, they're basically just handing off that to, um, the open space portion to a land trust or to the town or to the state or something along those lines.
So as this is written, it's the commission's decision as to which of these, like I'm just talking about the first example.
Yep.
One through second. So it would be the commission's decision to choose one of these seven options. Is there any case where the, the property owner, the developer would have the ability to choose? Or could they propose an option for the commission to approve? Is there, is there any precedent in any other town where something like that would happen? Or is, or what am I asking, like totally out of order?
Yeah, no, it's not. And I mean, and that's just the way that this town happened to draft it, um, because they were, they're super controlling.
Well, see, I would like to be the opposite. I'd like to have the property owner propose like one of.
Right, propose something and have the commission approve it.
Because one, one developer may choose to keep it within their parcel, pay the taxes on it and just, just
Sure.
signage and just easy signage. And this is, this is an even area, it shall be wired by habitat, whatever. Another applicant may say, well, I want it off my tax record, so I'm gonna dedicate it to a land trust and I don't wanna deal with it.
Right.
Just separate it and take it away from me. I don't want it.
This was, this was actually the one that I, I took from, I wanna say it's the town of Eastfords. If you go back and look at it, I actually softened it a lot. Um, because theirs was, um, um, they, that it, theirs was, um, much longer.
Yeah.
It went into much more detail as to how they determined which one, they actually went through specific steps as to how they, that each, that they could determine how it was done by, um, basically by, uh, what type of open space it was. So for some reason, the developer said, well, we're gonna do a conservation easement. They could say, well, we don't think a conservation easement is adequate. We feel that needs to be a, whatever it is, because it has this, this and this on it. And we think it, they all, it almost implied that they could, they had the power to say, and we think it should go to the state. Well, the state may not want it. So it did, um, so I would agree with you in the sense that it should be something that, um, is proposed by the developer.
Yes, I would like, I, I think just, I'm not speaking for the commission.
Right.
Saying, my idea that I'm just suggesting.
As part of the application.
Would be as part of the application that they propose what they, cause I like, I like the idea of this first option with seven different options for what can happen with the open space portion of the property. It would be applicant suggesting what they would like to do with it.
Yep.
And then the commission reviewing the P O C D, reviewing, you know, any other applicable bylaws in town and saying, yes, that is, that is fine, or well, this is in a, uh, uh, in the P O C D, there's specific parcels called out that they would, that the town would like to see as preserved property. And maybe that would change that decision, but if there's some opportunity to, like the applicant, find something that works for both. I think that would be, keep things as fair as possible. Yeah.
I agree, yeah. Well, that's important, open space. Was not even, I think it's a good idea, what I think we should give as much as possible to the owner going in.
Yeah.
Including, I'm not sure if it's, including this, but the option of paying the fee instead of, um, open space.
Yes, that, that.
Right, and that would still be in there.
Okay.
So this, cause this only talks about, this section is only if they're, if they're providing open space. There's, there still would be the, um, option for the fee.
Nice. Well, I think that should be on the owner. I think the owner should be open to decide.
Yes, agreed. Yeah, yeah.
Whether or not.
Definitely.
Not, not else.
I think the only thing that would supersede that is if, if, if that particular parcel was in a designated preserved area described by the P O C D and then I think the commission would have to weigh that and say, if, if that makes a difference, you know, I made that decision. Yeah, I think as many options as possible for the applicant would be beneficial. Not sure exactly how to write that, but. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, option number two, as far as disposition. In my opinion, that could be difficult for the commission to make a determination on. It's very open-ended. I think having it more structured would make it easier for everybody to understand and to make a decision.
Agreed.
I mean, this might not, this might not come across this board for another two years and then forget all this detailed regulation that we talked about. And you know, what, okay, what, what, we have open space, what are we doing? I don't remember what we're supposed to do with it.
This doesn't come up very often.
Exactly, you know, again, full of times for us. I think I've seen it once and I've been on for four years. I think I've seen it once. Yeah.
Okay.
The two zoning, we're talking industrial lots, that one, is that what we're talking about here? No, okay. Cause I know. I was talking about the small town, the small village there.
We're only talking about open space right now. Get open space. Yeah.
Um, we'll get to that.
Just open space. You got any?
Two zones.
Do you think that's worth it?
The only other thing that you guys didn't really talk too much about was on the open space section was the, um, and we, we did, we discussed a little bit was that currently you're still requiring open space in everything. Every subdivision. And you did talk a little bit about whether or not you would limit it to subdivisions of only a certain.
acreage, number of, number of.
Acreage or number.
Uh, lots, yeah. You know, that's a tough one. I thought about this a little bit. I didn't come to any easy conclusion.
So I mean, generally right now, you could still leave it just the way it is.
Well, we have two minimum requirement for a lot already. It would make more sense to do it by number of lots. So we talked about, I mean, I have a really thought about people, but we'd see enforcement.
Which is probably why it's at two, but I mean, you could make it three and then someone who's simply splitting a property into two, then it wouldn't fall under the open space. I mean, that's something to consider. Should make it a three-lot subdivision as opposed to a two-lot. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, a two-lot would be taking one piece of property and splitting it, whether they're equal or not. It's not taking one piece and adding, cutting two lots out of it. So it'd be a total of three at the end of the day.
Or depends, well, what do you guys define?
Yeah, I don't know.
Because sometimes this determine, for the purposes of, um, determining open space, some towns will include or or for the purposes of the subdivision. So if you're starting, let's say with 10 acres and you're, um, cause the definition of a subdivision is the division of property into three lots or more. So if you start with 10 acres, you get your free split. You carve off two, now you've got eight acres, right? So once you divide it one more time, so that eight acres, once that eight acres gets split, now it's a subdivision. So that eight acres being divided into two is a two-lot subdivision. Right?
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But the question, I guess, what you're getting at is some would consider that depending on, so that two, is that already, is there already a house on one? So if you, when you took your free split, with your 10 acres, if there's already a house on the eight acres and now he's splitting it because there's already one house, that's the existing lot. It's a two-lot subdivision, but he's already creating really one new lot. So is it a one-lot subdivision?
If you take that eight acres and split it to two, it's only one lot subdivision. Cause I went, I just went through that.
Because the other lot, because the lot has an existing house.
Yeah.
Now, if that other lot didn't, it could still, if it's, if that eight acres didn't have a lot on it or wasn't built upon, and then he's splitting it and creating two lots, then that would be a two-lot subdivision because neither lot is buildable. Because he hasn't created a buildable lot.
Yeah.
So it's kind of the difference between whether the lot is buildable or whether the lot has, hasn't been developed yet.
Yeah, so that's why it's currently at two, I'm guessing, and not three. Yeah. Cause that's the scenario that it's covering.
Right, so there's some nuances, I guess, to how, how they're considered. So like in your instance, you were already had a house on it. So it was considered a one-lot subdivision.
Right.
Because you already had one house. So you were only creating one lot.
Creating, yeah, two acres.
So it's a one-lot subdivision, but if you didn't have your house there and then you were carving it in half, you were gonna, you were basically gonna have to create two lots. You're gonna have to do two sets of perk tests.
Yeah. Okay.
But the one thing I was gonna point out is you do have this one regulation that I would consider doing something with that number and that was eight point, I think it's eight point two, where it says the minimum such dedication shall not be less than one acre and shall be of such size and location as deemed appropriate by the commission. I just feel like the one acre is just way too low. I would definitely consider at least increasing that because one acre of open space, creating a one acre open space parcel, just to me becomes, unless you're combining it with a larger one that maybe is adjoining or something, just doesn't seem to be. So the, the way it says, it says the area. So the maximum required area of open space shall be 15%. So that means if, in so, for example, in that has one acre lot. If it's a two-acre minimum, 15% of that lot would have to be, um, open space. So in theory, I guess.
Be a third of an acre.
Right. So as long as, I suppose, as long as it's done within a, if you wanted to create a conservation easement over one-third of that acre, I guess that would be fine, as long as they're not trying to, and I suppose he couldn't do that with a two-acre lot because then he wouldn't have the two acres. He couldn't dedicate you. This is always, you're not ending up with little small portions of land all over the place. The town doesn't end up with small bits and pieces of open space.
See, I think that's where we go back to the previous section and something that's small, we either fall under just private owners, like number six, private ownership with appropriate taking of development rights, which is just a little, a couple of placards on a post that just says, you know, conservation area.
Right.
For anybody in the future who comes across it and doesn't understand that that's.
Or the, okay, on that campus.
Or, or you pay the fee, which on that size would be very small. Yes, and you'd be done.
Right.
I think that would be, I, I'd hate to think it's a minimum of one acre and a two-acre lot. That, that to me doesn't make any sense.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I think you almost don't need a minimum size because when it gets down to that scenario that Jim just pointed out, other regulations then apply and you have other options that are better than either just not being open space and being. either just not being open space and being, be in lieu of, or it's just, it's maintained by the property owner and just, you know, just keep it natural. Which could be their choice.
No tax.
Um, I, I don't know how to, I don't know.
What's that?
If there's taxes, what is it? I, I think the taxes would be different on each of these several different options. If it's dedicated to a land trust, obviously, they wouldn't pay tax on it, they wouldn't be in ownership of it anymore.
If they did, might give them a lot of it up.
Well, yeah, exactly, right, yeah, which some applicants may want to do, others may hate that, so. I, I think, the, that's why I think it's important to have a proposed option by the applicant, if, from a list that's clearly stated.
Somebody's always paying the taxes.
So yeah, I think maybe there's no minimum size. Get rid of the one acre minimum size because I think other, other options are gonna apply at that point.
So it could just read generally um, such dedication shall be of such size and location as deemed appropriate by the commission. Without giving a number.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, then you wouldn't have to put a number.
That's the question. Do you see any potential for abuse if somebody says, I want ten acres of that because it's next to this property?
Well, we have.
Is there maximum percentage the town can take?
Yeah, the fee.
That's the maximum.
Yeah, the maximum required.
It's not taking it.
I'm sorry, dedicated. That's one.
I feel.
No, I used the wrong word.
Because, right, because technically, it can be a combination. So you could say you, you could actually say that yeah, this, maybe it's a large subdivision and the owner would like to do a combination of an easement and fee. So there's a portion that they're willing to do a conservation easement on. And then whatever the remainder is, they'll pay the fee in lieu of open space, so it's a combination of both. So maybe they give five percent open space and then they do the fee. Which would be interesting, so I'm not sure exactly how that would work because because when it, when you look at the maximum required, because you could require fifteen percent of the land. But when it comes to fee in lieu of, fee in lieu of is ten percent. The two percentages don't necessarily match. And the fee in lieu of is dictated by statute.
And the fifteen percent is consistent amongst pretty much every neighboring town. That's not like I made a number.
Right, the only way that usually the fee in lieu of increases is that there isn't, there's the option, I think, to increase it up to um, thirty percent if you were doing a um a conservation subdivision. So some towns have conservation subdivision, um, regulations, there's conservation subdivisions where they allow for smaller lot sizes and they increase the open space percentage. So if you're, um, right, so you can get.
Really complicated for the town of Sterling.
Right, yeah, so if you wanted to build, if you wanted to um, get your lot size down to an acre, let's say. If you were willing um, to do your lots at one acre or something like that, or you wanted to be able to do a one acre lot and give up thirty three percent in open space.
Yeah, and I think that's going against the plan of conservation and development that's been played out. So, yeah, I was, I would.
Right.
Not do that.
So there are, right, there are some towns that do that, like, I mean, Woodstock, oh, Woodstock did other stuff too, but um, that was something that I think Woodstock Building Associates is the only one that I know of that did a lot of conservation subdivisions um, up in that area. They would do a lot of cul-de-sacs with um, hiking trails and recreational areas surrounding around them, kind of with um, open space subdivisions.
Oh, yeah, I mean, and in bigger, you know, more urban towns, I mean, you'll see developers who will build parks and.
Playground.
Playground and.
Sports fields.
Yes, and, yeah. And put it in a land trust or something and it will be pretty much given to the town.
Yeah. Or becomes part of an HOA.
We, we don't typically see, I mean, typically, we will probably never see anything like that in Sterling because no one's doing that big of a development with that much revenue generated to make something like that a viable option, so we need to just, you know. Keep it simple, yeah. We're dealing more with like, you know, a lot split and do a couple of lots and a couple of houses, so, you know. I don't know what you have on that.
Yeah, I think so, unless you, um, you did mention something regarding whether you would do it on subdivisions of three lots or more.
I think going back to two years, one, we determined the, the definition.
Yeah.
Two is three.
Yeah, two, two is three, so. And to me, I would just keep that to.
Keep it at.
Yeah. Commission. Anyone says on my best. It's a commission, not just like.
But yeah, I believe that's all we have for open space. And then, um, you're talking about the zoning districts. What I started doing was based on the, this is just kind of, this was actually a map that we put together. It's not really a zoning map, that is the map of the I believe district that we had previously. I would actually have to look to make sure that it was that included all the current partials within it, but um, I started putting together, while looking at the current formatting and taking a look at how um, you would incorporate um, a new district into it. Um, so what I had done, looking at article three was kind of um, where it starts with the description of um, Sterling having one primary zoning district. Um. Cutting it out to two zoning districts, calling one the Sterling District, the other the Industrial Park District. And then going through basically the steps afterwards. Um, you're currently under your, basically the Sterling District being what is currently, what you have as your um, Sterling District, so that all uses permitted under state federal law, so anything that's currently drafted that way would stay the same. Um. The only thing I did cross out was that section three oh one point two, which dealt with special permitted uses. Because when you, um, usually when you list districts, if they're separate districts, you would list your permitted uses and then you would list your special permit uses. Um, so currently you have special permit uses of cannabis campgrounds and excavations, which would still stay the same within the Sterling District, which is everywhere else in town. Um, but I did highlight a couple of things as I'm going through this, of course, questions come up. Um, and one of them was, um, there's a yellow highlight on the top of the second page where it says certain uses shall require the submission and approval of a site plan and or special permit. And what I'm wondering is, is there a better term than certain?
Yes, way too vague.
Because certain just seems, it doesn't.
Certainly have questions following up.
What is, what is certain? And I believe what you intend to put there is, of my understanding is that what requires a um, site plan although not always, is a um site plan approval is required for all non-residential uses. So I'm wondering if we should be replacing certain with either the term non-residential or commercial.
Term commercial.
Yeah.
It's.
Industrial.
So.
What would you do with industrial? Do you consider there would be more difference?
Yeah. Maybe there's somewhat.
Well, you could just look at commercial slash industrial.
Right.
Where you keep.
Or, I mean, throughout this, you, you use the term non-residential, so you could just say non-residential.
Exactly.
But since you're making those changes, I just thought certain would be something that.
Yeah, something to clean up.
Right.
I agree, yeah, very confusing, yeah, so it should be not certain, but neutral industrial.
And then underneath that, it would just list your special permitted uses, and then under that, if you had the industrial park district with the purpose basically being somewhat very similarly worded to what is in the covenants now, just a one liner. Provide for the safe orderly development of the industrial park with appropriate commercial one industrial uses. Um, and currently, the only thing that I would probably change is I don't know if I would use the word light man- manufacturing. These permitted uses, I kind of took out of the covenants. But I didn't, some of them are repetitive, at least in my mind, um, if you look at what the covenants had. I saw, and I mean, you can list them the way the covenants are, but I see light manufacturing and processing, assembly and fabrication of materials as the same thing. And this is on the first page of your, um, of the covenant section. So A and B to me was kind of the same, a light manufacturing to me is processing, assembly and fabrication of materials. Well, I don't know if you want to limit your industrial parks to just light manufacturing. I mean, you can.
What would be non-light manufacturing looks? Example, what would the distinction be?
Um, something that would have silos of raw materials that could be hazardous or uh, require a special handling.
Maybe plastics. I don't know, I mean.
Um, I, I've worked on a glass bottling manufacturing plants, they have giant silos of what you think would be like harmless, but they're actually toxic in a, in a large volume.
Would a candle maker?
Ingredients in glass.
Would a candle maker be considered not light manufacturing, where they have silos of wax outside?
My business is not light manufacturing, I deal with rock all day long. It's all heavy.
I don't, I mean, there's gotta be a definition somewhere.
Of just like.
Somebody.
Right, because I mean, I don't know.
You commonly see this in going regulations in other towns where they.
Where they call it light manufacturing as opposed to manufacturing.
So there must be a, a hard definition somewhere that distinguishes between.
I mean, I will say that if you look at your, um, when you go, when you, when you dig down further and you start looking at the other your setback requirements, your impervious coverage and that type of thing, your maximum building size is about seventeen thousand square feet from a building standpoint. Um, because it's based on the percentage, I think you only allow or twenty, is it twenty percent impervious coverage of building? Or the forty, forty percent impervious coverage of the building. It's a two acre minimum buildable, no, uh, building lot. That only gives you like seventeen thousand square foot building.
Yeah, we need a higher number then. Forty percent isn't, isn't high, it should be higher than that, because you're counting the building and parking lots.
Well, no.
You know, those are all.
Those are separate. So the building is, you have two different impervious, you have, um, your building is forty.
Straight lock coverage?
No, your building is forty, lock coverage, total lock coverage is sixty, so building and parking is sixty. It still might be low.
Pretty low for industrial.
It still might be low, the industrial park covenants say sixty five. Now, when you look at playing fields, playing fields are fifty percent. Which I actually was surprised, I thought they were kind of low.
Ours is sixty five.
Right.
Yeah.
But what, that means that if you have a, for example, you have fifty percent, that means fifty two percent.
Fifty percent of your lot can be covered by impervious surfaces, that means parking, that means building, the whole thing. So that means if you have two acres, only one acre can be impervious, the rest of it has to be.
Or. Or something.
Or even cord storage also.
That includes anything, anything that.
If it's not paved, if it's like crushed stone or something that the water can get through, then it's kind of, it's impervious, so you could have you could have a, you know, like a, a storage yard for palletized material or for you have like precast concrete manufacturer, they would have, they wouldn't pave the whole yard, they would have it as like gravel or crushed stone.
In an industrial zone like this, or what is the reason for keeping open? I don't want to say open space, but I mean, this, why, why do you want?
Water, I know, right.
It's ma- it would mainly be, some of it has to do with drainage, some of it has to do with, um.
The water has to, has to have a place to go.
Right.
If you pave, if you pave a hundred percent of every lot up there, well, then you're gonna have some serious stormwater.
You would have to have a lot of stormwater retention and drainage.
How do we find out?
Infrastructure.
Is it the maximum amount of property that we can develop?
Very near.
But it's still a subdivision.
Yeah, I just a very neighboring town, but I would say.
I mean, we can look at the, um, you can also look at the, uh, all the new twenty twenty four stormwater, um, guidelines. Or, um, there's new stormwater. Whatever guideline, I can't think of what it is.
Probably some state.
Which may have some recommendations in them as well.
So playing field has a very robust, um, uh, development of industrial and commercial properties. So if they're at fifty and we're at sixty five, then I would say, okay, e- even if it sounds low, it's probably like pretty generous. I would hesitate to go over sixty five. The thing, like, I'm saying, you could get into like state regulations where they might have something, somewhere that.
I mean, I can take a look just to confirm to make sure that it's not.
Okay.
So you tend to be, the only place you tend to see higher is more in your urban core.
Yeah.
Like in your, like, in your case, it might be in the village area, but in a city, in places that have um, not only do they have sewer and water, but they have storm
Yeah.
water systems and things like that. Um, that everything's paved already anyway. Where buildings, this lot, it might be built all the way out to the lot line and buildings are connected to each other, that type. Where buildings, this lot, it might be built all the way out to the lot line and buildings are connected to each other, that type of thing. Where they may have like a seventy-five to eighty, like downtown Putnam. I think some of those lots have eighty percent, um, impervious lot coverage, stuff like that, but.
Okay.
But you also may, um, but not to get too far down the line, I guess. So with the manufacturing, we can look at, you know, or investigate definitions of what, or you can just leave the light manufacturing as the permitted use. But what I did was I looked at what you had in regards to, or what was in the covenants and kind of tried to combine things rather than have a huge long list, um, because I think the second one was.
Well, we could use the same language as the EDC covenants.
The wholesale trade and storage, um, warehousing, um. I didn't specifically put research and development, but you could put that in there. But like engineering just seems vague to me. Engineering isn't, engineering isn't a common use. You see it in a zoning, like a.
Business office use, not.
Right, that's, that would be more of like a business office. If you wanted to see something like that, it would be under like office. Like engineering would fall under G, office management, office uses, that kind of thing. I specifically kind of stayed away from the retail uses, although this one specifically says retail uses conducted in conjunction with manufacturing uses in the park.
I think that's just to give a business, this is my guess. Ross might be able to enlighten us further, but I think that's just to give a business owner who has a property with a building there the ability to sell a product out the front door that they're making on site versus opening a separate retail location.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it's to attract retail business.
You don't do that now to a small operating.
Selling stuff.
I mean, I worked at a Sterling position and they were, you know, I mean, I.
All the time.
But they would do stuff like that a little bit. People would come in and they'd want.
Even the cannabis.
Yeah, and rock sour, that's how it's found.
You can go there and buy it.
Yeah, maybe just another. Remove engineering because they're really. But otherwise, tons of stuff.
And then again, the, um, special permit uses, um, the only ones that I did, and I wasn't sure, were the communication towers. I know you guys mentioned adding that. And whether that would be added under just a permitted use or under a special permit use. You have anything in your regulations currently, well, technically towers are citing council controlled anyway, but.
I think we should add communication towers to the industrial parks, not as a special.
Just leaving where they are.
Yeah.
Permitted uses, basically the permitted uses are gonna be by site plan. If it's under a permitted use, it would just be by site plan approval.
Well, there's basically no, I mean, nothing that we're outlining is any different than the Sterling, uh, Sterling district.
Correct, because that was one of my other thoughts initially was that, do you really?
There's only one, there's only one, there's one statement. Okay, and, and then please continue. Section three point zero ones, zoning districts. Dallas Sterling shall have one primary zoning district. Any use otherwise permissible under state and federal law shall be permissible within the district provided that the other requirements of these regulations are met, except as listed in three oh one point one zero one point two. It's allowed in the state of Connecticut, it's allowed anywhere in the town of Sterling. So how is the industrial park different? Because if it's not different, there's no point in doing this, right?
Wasn't it too, in a school residential?
School residential?
Like in a school residential, but. We're, we're talking about pretty detailed stuff now. Light manufacturing, heavy manufacturing, it's all allowed anywhere in town. So to, to limit anything from the industrial park would be, we could be getting ourselves into trouble by listing certain things that should be allowed. Would they be allowed anywhere else in town, but we didn't word it properly in the industrial park zone, so now it's not allowed? I just want to be careful we don't get into that scenario, because there's not enough differences between the Sterling district and the industrial park district.
I mean, the biggest difference is one has sewer and water, you know, it does, that's a huge difference.
Well, yes. Well, yes, but that's gonna, that's going to come into play with somebody looking to set up an operation, so that anything you're zoning.
Has a lot to do with zoning. Are there any businesses that you would not in, want in this close proximity to other businesses?
Store and water in the village. I, I don't, I don't see limiting anything really in the industrial park zone, other than residential.
Yeah, retail, sure, retail, go for it.
Are there any existing zoning regulations that would we get more difficult for businesses to run, be industrial? Maybe that's what we should be looking at.
Yes, because we can't, we can't make it any more difficult.
Right. Well, I'm not saying we should make it easier.
Yeah, it should be easier, yeah. We just not seeing a lot of differentiators.
That's what I thought the purpose was, to make it easier for businesses to run.
But I don't know if we've done that yet.
Right.
Jim, you've been doing a great job. I appreciate all your work. This is no dig on you, cer- certainly not. That's not what I intended. I, I, I just, I want to keep everyone focused on finding differences to make this exercise worthwhile. So that all the work you put into this is actually going where we want to, it's actually accomplishing something and not accidentally creating a stumbling block or, or a.
Or other.
Yeah.
I mean, if you took the covenants and looked at the covenants, it's basically defining what the zone is. What it is.
Well, yes, but you could say this about, I mean, this, this, any business that comes into the town has to follow this.
They have to follow the covenants, that's it.
If they go in the industrial.
In the industrial park, right. This is, right, this only applies to the industrial.
Right, so it's sort of like this is their zone.
Right, it's almost like we already have it.
You have to do this, period.
Well, that's the question.
What's the point?
I know.
Well, I guess in my opinion would be then, if I'm the business owner.
Yes, what's this?
Do I have any? And I'm going, do I want to go into your industrial park? Do I go in and look through your covenants? No, I don't. I go look at your zoning.
Right, right. That's a good point.
Your zoning is gonna tell me what, or should tell me what I can put there. I'm not gonna go into your land records and try to find your covenants for a lot, whatever.
Right.
To tell me what I can build on.
Unless you have it in the zoning, it says check the covenants.
Covenant would be the zoning, I mean.
But it does define a lot of what you can do there. Yes, you can put a building on that lot and you have to have your setbacks. That's pretty much what we're gonna say. And this tells you exactly what that building can be like.
I know, but those, but the, the other part of that is your covenants are, and it specifically says that, those are guidelines. And when it comes to the setbacks and all that kind of stuff, those are not zoning, I want to say supersede, when it comes to your setbacks and your lot size in regards to the covenants. And I'm not sure the covenants, and this is probably a question for the town attorney, because I know every time we ask him that, he kind of got a little wishy-washy about what, who
Yeah.
was in charge of what when it came to uses, because once zoning comes into play, the use, I don't know if the use of the covenants necessarily supersede the zoning. So like that document, even though you have the covenants in there, like, there's nothing in there that says, I know you have what the permitted uses are.
Yeah, we have, we have setbacks, side yard, rear yards, site planning standards.
Why, why can't you just make the covenants?
And one eight acre was the minimum that we have up there. Now it's part of the zoning. I can tell you what I want. The town told me what I had to have up there.
Right, but when did you do that?
Ten years ago.
What year, before zoning?
No, ten years ago.
Ten years.
So two thousand.
Two thousand fifteen.
Fifteen, they've had zoning since two thousand nine.
Nine, so.
They told me, you know, I mean, I had to, I could have my building, but I had to edit my setbacks.
Right.
So I mean, I.
But your setbacks were based on the zoning regulations, not the.
But, but I had, they gave me the packet, the town.
Right.
To buy something in this, uh, industrial park, you have to go to the town, go through their approval, not even here, go through the town's separate approval. They give you the package.
Right, to buy it.
To buy it, but they tell you what you can do, can't do, how you have to do it. This girl Jamie Rabbit is good at that.
This also.
Well, Jamie Rabbit told a lot of people that they had to do things that weren't necessarily like you.
Uh, this is true.
That's true.
Uh, he was, but the town was the one that gave me the old stack of papers that said, this is what I had to follow. And then my engineer designed it according to that.
So this has a minimum lot size of one point eight acres?
And I, and none of your, right, but your zoning is doing.
The only way to override that, yeah, only way to override that.
What do we want, the minimum lot? I mean, I think those are the things we have to look at.
Because your minimum lots, right, because your minimum lots, lots.
Setbacks.
Two acres of building.
Exactly, I think we need to loosen those from the industrial zone.
That would be a big difference. It made it one acre lot. That would be a big difference.
Uh, that's my opinion. Those, I don't think that they should be operating in residential. Um, to make it easier, for this to go up there.
Most of the lots in the park are pretty large, I mean, even more than two acres.
Well, we have, we have to consider a phase two. When we write this though, we have to consider a phase two.
They were looking at two dividing into two acre lots. I don't know why the town would buy that. Oh, I guess you have to if you're gonna sell it. Yeah, two acre lots and then if they wanted two lots, they have four and combine two, two of the lots together.
What's like the average size of these lots now? Basically.
Four, five.
These, these smaller ones are three, so, yeah.
These are three acre.
Yeah.
Some of them.
Oh, so these are huge.
Yeah.
Well, this is basically. Yeah, the tire burning plant, um, the old site is not part of the industrial. It's a separate.
Yeah, so minimum lot size doesn't even matter. The town's been subdivided into lots. The minimum lot size doesn't even matter. We can make it, we can make it a quarter, make it.
So maybe, maybe it's best just to keep it as is and not create a separate zone. You got the covenants which, you know, anybody business that moves in there has to.
Thought about like existing setbacks and other rules that they would have to follow. Could we make those easier for these?
They're already super small. Yeah. Yeah, they're not gonna be restricted when you go to the park.
Well, yeah.
I'm not allowing you to do all this. The setbacks are short, yeah.
Current setbacks are twenty-one. Well, there are lots that existed prior to two thousand nine, right?
Yeah, well, those are excluded from, if they're existing, if the, no. A lot that predate zoning.
Yeah, which they.
They still have to follow current setbacks. Why would it be excluded?
Because the regulations exclude it.
They would still have to follow current setbacks.
The zoning regulations have two different setback requirements for lots that.
Give it the smell of tax.
Predate zoning.
So. Yeah, non-conformal lots, side, there you go.
If you look at, is it the parcels in existence prior to September fourth, two thousand nine, shall adhere to the following setbacks. Side yard twenty feet, rear twenty-five.
I see that, yeah. Okay.
So that's what I was assuming the industrial park would fall under.
Yeah.
Right?
We got this.
Whether or not that's what they've been utilizing.
I don't think anyone's even close to.
It's, it's twenty-three.
So side yard twenty, rear yard thirty, in that covenants.
In the covenants, in the district.
I think if that, that was someone, that was another town, it was just, it's stuck to this. It was stuck to this. He's just, shoot me, will you? Thank you. Well, I'm giving a guideline now, but also. That's why. That's what I'm trying to, maybe you can stay, or you can create. One way to do it. We'd agree.
Should you leave it the same and just put in exclusions? Leave the covenants the same?
We just exclude residential.
That would be EDC issue, right? To change their covenant? What I missed one too, sir. Saying just update the, eh, update the EDC covenants to and exclude residential from allowable uses.
Yeah, but that would be an EDC, EDC thing.
Only we knew a number of the board.
Quick.
Then you go, you got a task.
What's that?
No residential in the park. It's not mentioned. But it's not mentioned.
Only shows the same thing. Over and done.
There isn't, but make sure it's in.
Separate.
Or. Make, make, make sure we next meeting. It's to include no residential. There's right now. Doesn't, it doesn't list it.
Can zoning, they do, they have to.
More features.
Somewhere in.
So, wow.
Yeah, seems like this here.
In the industrial park.
So that would be residential.
In the industrial park, in.
In your.
It's too huge.
Oh, they had them.
Yeah.
Oh. They've, they've been there forever.
Right, yeah.
I don't, I still don't.
Can, can zoning address covenants? But make.
Yeah, it's kind of weird. It's on the north of us, right?
Right, I think so. I, I still think it should be addressed somewhere in, whether you do it or just say, you do it, even if you just say, okay, you still have one zone and just have a caveat underneath it regarding the industrial park and acknowledge the fact that there's an industrial park. And because currently the industrial park, I'm sure there's gonna, there's a map on file with the town clerk that says what the industrial park is.
Yeah.
And what the lots are.
Yeah, gotta be.
If they reference the town map, town clerk map, duh, 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 or whatever the industrial park lots are and just say something within there that, um, no residential use is allowed within that.
So in section three point, three oh one point one, prohibited uses, we have an A for campers, we could have a B for residential. So in section three point, three oh one point one, prohibited uses, we have an A for campers, we can have a B for residential.
Right, residential uses are not allowed within, and you're not creating a district, you're just saying within the. And you're gonna basically put a, something that. References that town clerk map.
Yeah.
And those parcels.
Yes.
That are listed as, um, I'd have to check with the town attorney just to make sure, but I know like. For example, the town of Brooklyn did this with their mud regulations, they have a mud, it's a district mud. Mill reuse development district, and when they defined that, what the mud is. They specifically spell out map block lot.
Yes.
That's by map block lot, what that is, what those, what they are.
Yeah.
And it's basically just two lots.
Yeah, so there might be a map. That you can refer to a map.
And then maybe a town clerk map that you can just refer to that particular, particular town clerk map. Because that defines when the town created the. Or the covenants must refer to a map, because if you have covenants, they have to reference.
Something.
Something.
Yeah, it's, uh, volume fifty, pages forty five to fifty. In the town clerk's office.
Are the.
Since nineteen eighty three.
Those are covenants.
Right, it's old, you know?
So there's gotta be a way to reference it.
No.
So if residential is the, if residential is the only difference.
Well, I would say residential, I would say campgrounds.
No campgrounds in the industrial park?
Do you want a campground?
Industrial park?
I think it'll be a waste of the industrial park, but.
Well, that's what I mean, those are the things that. I don't know, do you want a campground in your industrial park?
Okay, so. That would be very easy to add in a, in a three oh one point one D. Exclusions from the industrial park. Citing that math block, you know, reference number. And it could be. It could be the subset, or it could just be. Um, it could just be residential, comma, campground, comma, whatever else.
Yeah. That's important.
Or we go back to writing whole zone map.
No, I wouldn't do that at this point, have to look into this.
You put a lot of effort into this, I, I hate to go backwards, but I'm not seeing enough differences.
Yeah.
I mean, do you think other than the other differences you see that would be important to include that would help differentiate the industrial park of a separate zone?
I mean, the only thing that. Not necessarily, not unless you guys are thinking about putting, now, because the only other thing that I didn't start doing was, you talked about adding. Um, a section that referenced. Uh, and it was more with. Cause you have the covenants, but the, uh, if you looked at Adams. I don't know.
Oh, yeah, Adam, industrial park. They had performance.
Performance standards.
Yeah.
But you also mentioned that some of that was similar to what was already referenced in the covenants, so. It feel like they're covered under the covenants.
Right.
But the question comes into play is, who enforces the covenants? The zoning enforcement officer, and does, does there anything in there say that? You have a zoning enforcement officer who enforces your zoning regulations?
There's no EDC enforcer.
Right.
Although. There is some sort of enforcement. Because when somebody doesn't put a building up in the proper amount of time, they, yeah, they know. Then something happens, something happens.
Right.
They give, they give them a notice, basically.
There's no zoning enforcement in the industrial park? There's no zoning enforcement in the industrial park?
Well, there's zoning enforcement, but there's zoning enforcement in regards to the zoning regs.
Yeah.
Not in regards to the EDC.
Not in the industrial park.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like the zoning enforcement officer doesn't go up there, it's the EDC. You know, they go in regularly, they look around, somebody's put up assignments inappropriate, they let them down, they get, they get them out.
So there's some enforcement about that.
Yeah, it's also put a building up.
So it would be a question, right, whether or not.
Of, of buying the site, if they don't, then they are pulled, either do it.
So the EDC don't want all that.
Or will take the land back. Yeah, we're gonna take the land back, simple as that.
Well, if there's all the differences, then I think the easy way would just be three oh one point one B.
Yep.
Yep, I mean, there was a couple of, a couple of, uh, exclusion, exclusion.
Yep.
Wouldn't be exclamation, wouldn't be canvas, wouldn't be.
I mean, those are the ones that came to my mind, was residential and campgrounds.
Yeah, residential. Campground.
Because those are the ones that you have.
Yeah.
All the others are currently already prohibited.
Yeah.
What about heavy manufacturing, cause we permit. Light manufacturing, what would be the difference?
Well, have you any?
Is if we're not gonna differentiate just the red and light, just the heavy and black.
There's a definition of light, green and black.
Uh, there is.
Oh, so there is.
There is.
No, there is.
You want me to read it?
Um, sure, but do you want to explain?
Light industries, light industry manufacturing industries that usually are less capital intensive than heavy industries. Are more consumer orientated and business orientated, as they typically produce smaller consumer goods. Most light industry products are produced for end users rather than intimated users, produced by other industries.
Let's do that.
It sounds. Because if.
Well, yeah, but it doesn't apply in this, doesn't matter.
Well, if you're.
Any permitted use.
Yeah.
Any permitted use by the state of Connecticut is allowed in the industrial. It is. Doesn't need to, like, heavy doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Right, so you wouldn't.
Only thing you can't do is like a lady, cause that would require state permitting on a state level, so something like that would be. Not allowed, cause that's not permitted use by state of Connecticut, that would be a special permit by state of Connecticut. Yeah, you wanna manufacture steel, go for it.
Yeah, right.
That would be heavy manufacturing, because it's steel manufacturer would be. Creating a product that would be then supplied to another industry.
You know, a lot, a lot of typical machine shops wouldn't fit that definition, that's, that's my point, was. What, what you read doesn't seem like it, cause they don't, they're.
Oh, in the covenants?
No, what you just read, the definition of a lady manufacturer, a lot of typical machine shops.
But they, they are producing something for an user, a consumer. Um, or are they producing something that's gonna be used in another?
They, they often will produce things that's gonna be used like for ma, for other people manufacturing things.
Okay.
Parts for machines and parts for.
That's what I'm saying, even, even a relatively small machine shop. Definition often. So that's my, I don't think, I don't think we're talking about.
No, the, the only place where listing light manufacture, or there's light manufacturing listed is in the EDC covenants, which we don't have to go with. And the zoning regulations that we have control over, they can do.
Any permitted use.
Maybe EDC should talk about changing that.
Yeah, that's up to them, yeah, there you go, yeah. Wouldn't be a little.
Peter. Get on that.
Is Peter paying attention?
No, he is, he's got a fake copy of his notes here.
Turn off the scary.
We should have a light church.
I used to work at that machine shop, but they don't pick that definition.
Yeah. Well, then they wouldn't be in compliance with EDC covenants, so as far as zoning is concerned.
Well, I didn't just say.
The only way to.
I mean, they're, they're not, you know.
It's just a small machine shop.
Yeah, it's a small machine shop, but they're creating requirements for.
Yeah.
Other manufacturing.
Is it still there?
Yeah.
I'll put it in.
Stirling Precision is called.
Okay, so we're gonna have three oh one point one B to exclude residential and campgrounds.
I don't think it's Stirling Precision, yeah, I think they're right. I'm just saying that we shouldn't be restricting.
We are.
All right, while you have this piece of paper in front of you. Frontage. Four point oh three. Can someone interpret to me? It says whenever any dwelling is established or expanded. Or any non-residential use is established or expanded, after the effective date of any lot other than a rear lot. The lot must have no less than two hundred and fifty feet of continuous frontage along a street. And I wanna know, or what I'm wondering, as I got to that section, and then we were gonna discuss this, as we went through, because. Lot frontage is usually a set amount, so I would assume looking at this that your two acre lot. Minimum lot size requires two hundred and fifty feet of frontage. If I'm gonna build an addition, which is what this is telling me. On the lot. And I don't have two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, I can't do it.
Um.
Because I can't expand. Based on that term that says expanded. Correct?
Yeah.
Right?
That's what it says to me, it doesn't say if it was, it says if it was.
Doesn't say if I'm building another dwelling, it just says if I'm expanding.
So you could be on.
Says whenever any dwelling is established. But I can understand that, so if I'm building a house, I have to have two hundred feet of fifty feet of frontage. But it says or expanded. Which to me is just an addition.
Right.
But that doesn't, to me, if I already have a house on a lot. And my lot doesn't have two hundred and fifty feet of frontage.
Yeah, but.
Like on subdivision like that, I had a four hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
Right, minimum seven, I can do.
Yeah.
On subdivision is two hundred and fifty feet, where this is existing.
Yeah.
Existing, and you wanna expand.
Yep.
I don't see why you need two hundred and fifty feet, or, or you have two hundred.
But that's my point, exactly. Yeah, so why?
Uh, that's what, that's the way it's written right now, right?
No, or the way it's written right now, it says that you can't expand.
Right. The way it's written right now, no, that's the way it's written right now, it says that you can, you have to have two hundred and fifty feet, so even if your lot predated zoning.
Right?
If you wanna expand it, now you have to meet zoning requirements.
I'm guessing that's not how it's being applied.
So, so this is, this is separate from, this is separate, this is moving past industrial park, now we're.
This is. This has nothing to do with anything else, it's just something that I noticed when I was going.
What's on the, a new, a new, opposed text amendment change.
Right, this is just something that I noticed when I was going through looking at the dimensional requirements.
So. We're not. Are you suggesting we change simply the word expanded, not the two hundred and fifty feet, two hundred and fifty feet?
Right, I'm not saying anything about dimension, I just don't understand why the expanded was included there.
Just cut out, or expanded.
And, yeah, I mean, I'm guessing there's been plenty of building permits issued for a.
This is highlighted in yellow.
Yes.
This was not something that you did newly, this was just.
No, that's not new, that was existing.
This is only to bring to our attention, it's not new words, it's not new language.
Okay. Right, yeah, I just, yeah, currently, that's all written right now.
Right.
Right.
I don't.
No, because I was, I was gonna bring it up in conversation, because the, there is no front requirement in. In the, um, what's it called? Yeah, covenants don't require. So I was gonna assume that they would require two hundred and fifty feet, but then as I was reading this, I didn't understand why that expanded was included.
The other two are about rear lots.
Yeah. Should've. Be the same as what's more than lots.
Yeah, lots.
Right, because I would think that that would have just to do with, um, the expanded part would just. Be more of a non-conforming issue, that would be handled under non-conformities, if someone's.
Well, as we, it's written, it's a rear lot. It's kind of the same, uh, scenario, except that it's fifty feet.
Right, so all this, all the frontage is actually saying is that, or all it should be saying, I believe, is that you require two hundred and fifty feet. Of frontage for a lot. Whether it's non-residential or residential, and for a rear lot, you require a minimum of twenty five feet, but no more than fifty feet.
Yeah, it should say whenever a lot is established.
Right.
Not, nothing to do with.
Nothing to do with expanding or. And then you don't require, and then that third section, I wasn't actually sure if that should, um. Should be in your subdivision regulations, not in your zoning regulations in regards to. Um, interior lots being within five hundred feet of each other. Because usually, cause that's implying that you have. Because that's usually something that you see in subdivisions, so if someone's designing a subdivision, you're giving them a subdivision restriction, restriction that they can't create. So many interior lots, so you can't create an interior lot within five hundred feet of another interior lot. So you can't have an accessway. A twenty five foot access to an interior lot within five hundred feet of another twenty five foot interior lot. Um. So it almost, the way that it's written, is saying that there are. Anywhere that that's occurring now, which I don't know if it is, those are all non-conforming. Just non-conforming interior lots or whatever. But. That would be, normally that would be like in a different section that deals with just interior lots, but. The expanded part, I thought, was, was unnecessary.
Who got people spending now, less than two hundred and fifty feet?
Peter, speak so that the microphone, so that everyone's.
This, this is, this is written out the way it is, but pre-existing lots prior to zoning. Right, once you get a permit after the zoning is established, right? What you're saying here, they can't expand unless they got two hundred and fifty feet. Right? That's basically what you're saying, what we're saying. Yet there are lots out there now, it's sort of being expanded, you know, building.
Yeah, like Jim was saying, I don't think it's being applied. Like, it's probably not being applied.
Probably, yeah.
Right. It's written here, it's probably not being applied. So we set up.
Do you have, do you have the zoning regulations in here that call it?
Well, I don't, my truck. Um. For the, you know, when I would go by the status, eight dash one thirty six H, it says, if you made changes prior to a permit. After a permit's been issued, application's been issued, you don't have to abide by that, that change. Under eight dash one thirty six, I believe it is H, I got it in my truck. The fact that came on. Only it is. Reply for an application. You got the permit, and then zoning was changed, that's what you say, you still don't have to abide by that change. You don't have to follow the change, because you've got the application and the permit prior to. And or the C two, or the CO. And or the C or the CO.
For what you applied for, but now you wanna change what you originally applied for.
But, but then you came up with zoning change. And you already. Approved that permit. Then then four months later, you went and changed your zoning, and the guy's all done. And you got a CO.
What were you saying now with it?
It's like me, once you might have this, when I had a wall, my wall's up, it don't actually belong.
Well, it's just that unusually, um. The frontage part, I can understand being there, but the, um. The interior, where it talks about, um, no interior lots being within five hundred feet of each other. Usually might be a different section that just speaks to interior lots. Which. Often is spoke about either in the subdivision regulations. But it also can be in your zoning regulations, can be in both, because usually it's something that comes up when someone's designing a subdivision. Because they're tried, they're the ones who are carving out lots. But it also sometimes ends up in your supplemental regulations in your zoning, just kind of as a, um. So it's not, I guess. Horrible, and it's as, you guys don't really have a section for supplemental, I don't think. Um, so whether it's there or not. It could stay there, it probably just would, it might be something that could be, um. I guess reformat it a little better, just to say, this is what the fronted requirement is. Fronted requirement is two hundred and fifty feet. Period. And in an interior lot, front requirement is this. And no. Two interior lots can be within. Five hundred feet of each other. But the expansion part, and I would have to see if it conflicts in any way with, um. The. Non-conforming use section of the regs. Because, but I think the non-conforming use section probably covers. Some of that, what is the whole expansion part, because I think your your expansion. Like, if you're expanding, if you're, the expansion of a residential use, as long as it's not expanding into a. Setback. I don't see where there's an issue. I don't see why the expansion of a. Would have anything to do with the frontage.
Can I make a very simple suggestion? Go for it. I think ver- very simply, I think everyone. It sounds to me like everybody's kind of on the same page, where it would be a good idea to address. The term expanded, it it appears in the, uh, like, two, two or three, four, maybe however many times Jim, I think, could be tasked with. Removing that word expanded, you know. Which I think would probably fall in line with what's actually being. Uh, approved on permits around town. And this would avoid some, any potential conflict with what's actually being approved. Just have Jim address that term, come back to us next month with revised. And I think that could be very simply done, if if everyone agrees with that, then I would, I would task him with just changing that version and bringing it back next month.
Yeah.
When it gets into the rear lot situation, that's something that I would need to get my head around, because I don't understand exactly how that works. And what other sections it would apply to, because that could, changing something here could affect other sections.
Yeah.
I don't have any idea sitting here at this table tonight, what that would be.
Yeah.
So that to me is a much bigger. Research project. But we, I think we could easily address the first part of that. And and, yeah, I mean, this this isn't old, this has been written for, I don't, who knows how many years, and I don't know that it's been an issue, so. I don't know if I wanna dig into that like right now, but let's. Research it, let's go through the motions, if Jim, you know, brings up good points, so we can look at it, but. At some point, we wanna get some of these amendments done and get this into public hearing and get these off our plates, because we've got one item from last month that's ready to go.
Yeah.
I think we, I think we have a direction now on the industrial part, getting that very simply written in the section. We could update this, and then let's get a package together for public hearing, and try and get some of these like completed and done.
Yeah.
Then we can look at a next round, that would be my suggestion. Jim, does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. And make a motion and never do it expanded or EDC covenants ever again. It's not, just kidding, okay, okay. I get it. Jim, there are some other highlighted portions of that, just regarding, um, an industrial park zone?
Yes.
Yeah. And we've had recent applications during that. For either way. Eighty-one, uh, eighty-one IPR, Blue Red Road.
It'd be nice to get a control, whatever you want to, weekends, because they get crazy up there.
Oh, for what?
It'd be nice to get, you know, withdrawal in weekends, because they.
That's a select one, it's zone. Bring that to select me. Yeah, bring that to select me, that was the effective date, I I agree with you. It's, it's burnout or burnout.
Hot rods, everything.
Yeah, have you been up there?
The effective.
It's 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 covered with rubber, it's like.
The first cult of sadness.
They they come from all over, Rhode Island all over, like they go, yeah.
Like, we don't, yes, they go.
We don't have police, so it's.
So nobody, uh, builds.
What about speedhounds up there? So I know the.
It would just kill the traffic.
Wow.
Yeah, you know, that's it.
Ross, what's our next, uh, item?
That's it. Well, I mean, do we wanna continue with regulation priorities?
Are there others?
No, that's it, that's all the summary, Jim.
No, I mean, within regulation priorities, what, what, uh, buildable polygon, buildable area, I don't think we ever resolved yet.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't wanna change. This is my opinion.
I don't know, this this was one of them, this came from Steve Lawson. A wide gap, but we all got a copy of it. Uh, has to do with. Create a specific definition for principal structure. There's no, nothing in there, anything about principal structure. So he sent this, this, this email back in two, October, almost a year ago. About some of the things he he's seen in, uh. In, uh, his order of affairs. With different issues. Could you give Judy a copy of that?
Yeah, what, do you want this?
She would, we got a copy of ECC.
Yeah, but I don't remember it.
It was a year ago, I know.
Yeah.
Judy, you know that, you've got my notes all over.
It was the principal problem, because they they needed, they couldn't compare. The.
That was.
The appeal to, they didn't have anything else to compare it to, and it was no.
That was, the issue was, there was a, right, because.
There was no principal residence on the adjacent property.
Because it was, it was a particular situation with a lot, uh, application they received for Newport Road. Where the principal structure, when they were comparing, you have that one regulation that says that you can vary the front lot line. Based on the principal structure of the abutting.
Adjacent.
Or adjacent lots. But in this particular instance, the. Principal structure. Well, one, if you're saying the principle, the the use of the lot, principal use was a residence. Well, the residence was actually further than the closer structure to the build, to the. Building that was asking for the variance, and the building closer to that. One asking for the variance was the larger. And probably had more of an impact on the actual, um.
Encroachment?
Right. On the, on the variance or on the building asking for the variance than the primary use structure. Of the, um, adjacent property. So I think what they were looking for, because there was no definition of what the. Primary structure was, was, so they utilized, in that particular instance, they said, well, we're gonna use our eyes, what we determine as. The prime, in this instance, what the primary structure is, and we're gonna say that it's this, because this is the, um, the one that has the greatest.
That's a tough one to write a new regulation for and have it not be restrictive everywhere else, you know, that's a tough one. Because it's a very, like, one-off kind of.
Because I think what that started was the discussion as to whether or not. The issue was really determining what the primary, what the, determining that issue or determining a, um, better method of. Determining the setback for those lots that are within the village district. So that they had more flexibility.
Yeah.
Than having to ask for variances. Based on. Other, um. Other issues.
I I do a lot of work in Newport, Rhode Island, everything's a variance there. And everybody goes to variances every month, and you're, and it takes months and months and months and months to get approved. So I I might be, uh, jaded because of that, but I I don't see it. I think it would be very difficult to write a new regulation that would be fair to ninety-nine point nine percent of what happens. To try and accommodate this point one percent. Then to, for that point one percent, we just go for.
That's why Roger Williams couldn't settle that.
Right, exactly, that's right, that's right, he couldn't get a, he couldn't get a zoning, uh, application approved. So I mean, I understand, you know, going for a variance, but I I think in this town, it's not difficult, and it can happen in a timely manner, so. I don't know, I mean. Yeah.
Variance, so we try to critique it. Where if somebody has an issue, you have a variance, and I'm sure we've seen practicality.
Good, then you go for a variance, yeah.
Just have.
There's a process, yeah.
Definitely, a process, more.
And it's much quicker here than in a town like Newport, where you can be on the docket for six months and still not be.
So the priorities we had had listed were accessory dwelling unit. Fee schedule. Subdivision open space requirement exemption. Setbacks, non-conforming lots, specific to village areas, which is what we're just talking about. Setbacks, non-conforming lots, other, buildable polygon and buildable area. Creation of industrial zone, creation of village zone, and home-based business as accessory uses permitting, those were the ones we had as potential.
Okay, so I think we've addressed all of those, except this last one.
Yeah.
Regarding like a bill, or we don't have a village district, but regarding what we consider off the record to be a village district. Under two acre lots in a, in a dense pattern, yeah. So I, we probably should take a look at that and see if there's something we can come up with that, you know, that would. That would maybe help that area and have them not have to go for a variance, but. And we do have the variance process, so there is a a way to get something approved, correct, there is an avenue.
Essentially, when when I first came on the board way back, it was. They didn't, they weren't for variance, basically the buildings factor, the building, uh, question, um. He he basically set the rules for them, so if you wanted to put a shed up or something. And you couldn't do it, because the lots are so small, he allowed it, you know, so he.
Which I don't know if that's.
He had flexibility.
I think that, I think there's probably some legal issue with that, but.
Yeah, well, well, within reason, you know, I wanna put a shed up, and I got the room.
The problem with that, though, is if you go to the other street.
Right.
You get somebody in there, well, I'm doing it.
Something I do anyway.
Right. Okay, so we have a couple things that I would think we can look, it'd be close to wrapping up, and then we have a couple things that we should probably keep on that list and look at.
All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
All right, I'll second that, all right.
I'll save it, yeah.
Jim, thanks for all the hard work again, again, yeah.